Good evening, everyone. We will call it a word. Do you have any public comment, any comments today? None? I need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 18th. Do I have a motion?
I'm here.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those cheering none? Chair's report. I have nothing to report tonight, and we'll move right on to the president's report. Too fast.
All right, so let's set this up here. Maria said I have only 45 to 50 minutes tonight, so...
Let me get comfortable.
So, we had a couple of meetings this week with the state university that, being a college president's meeting, we had a SUNY president's meeting. And so what... What we focused on at the president's meeting is a, what they're calling the SUNY Academic Momentum Campaign. This is similar to campaigns that have been run in other states like California and others. And so what they're attempting to do is recognize that where, you know, in the past, we've focused more on traditional enrollment strategies of just trying to get as many people through the door as we possibly can, and understanding that that's not really today's reality. They're now focused on how do we keep those students that we do manage to get through the door, and how do we get them across the finish line in terms of graduating? And so they've set some goals for the system, they've set some goals for the individual campuses, and they're going to set about measuring those things. So I thought I'd just give you a quick overview of what that looks like. So, the campaign's launching this fall. They started discussions over the last couple of months, and they're trying to look to improve retention, completion, and set targets for all of us to achieve. So, these are the six metrics that they're going to be looking at in terms of this initiative. So you're looking at graduation rate at 100% of time. So for an associate's degree program, that would be within two years. 150%, so three years. They're going to be looking at improving fall-to-fall retention rates. They're going to look to have students earn at least 30 credits in the first year because that's going to help them carry forward. And they're really going to focus on gateway course completion because if you don't have your English and your math out of the way, chances are you might not make it. And they're going to look at getting more and more students to fill out the FAFSA. That's a state initiative as well as a SUNY initiative. And I think everybody knows what the FAFSA is, but that's the free application for federal student aid. So, for us, you'll see in this table, we've got the metrics by the system, by the community colleges, and then for us as an individual campus. So, the current rates you'll see down below in the graph for the various cohorts, they're, you know, the most recent cohort that they've measured for 100% graduation rate for us was 29.7. They want us to get to 35.8 for the next group of, the next cohort. And they've broken that down. So the top graph really looks at all of the targets for the campus across the board. And each subsequent slide that we're going to look at here kind of breaks it down in a little bit more detail. So, 150% graduation rate. Again, the most recent cohort that you see there, and this might be a little hard for you to see at your place, but it's currently 39.1%, and they want us to get to 43.9%. Fall-to-fall retention, again, the most recent cohort they measured was 55.7% for us, and they want us to get to 60.6% for the fall '26 cohort. Great. And 30-plus credits, again, the most recent measurement was 22.4%. They wanted to get to 32.8% for us. And English, they want to go from 66.5 up to 80%. And math, they want to go from a comparable measurement, 66.7, they want to, again, get up to 80% for those math classes. FAFSA completion, it's measured in two different ways. One for first-year and transfer students. The second is for continuing and transition, which is transition or people that are coming back. So they want us to get from 75% for first-year students up to 90%, and 71.7% up to 86.7%. So then, you know, you think, all right, so we have these targets, these metrics, how are we going to get there? One of the ways the system is hoping to get us there is through the ASAP program or the ACE program, which you may have, we've talked about it here. We applied to be part of the ASAP program this year. We have been accepted for next year. So the governor put additional funding into the budget, and the final budget that was approved this year included funding for additional cohorts to be added. So they're looking to add about 10,000 students to the ASAP program. And the ASAP program is really focused on trying to help students get these various targets. So it's to help you, you know, stay on track, stay in school, get to that 100%, ideally 100% mark in terms of graduation, but certainly the 150% mark. ASAP program comes with funding to support it, and that's continuing funding too, so it's not a one-and-done, like we're going to give you this money to go hire the people and then we're going to walk away and good luck to you. It is a pledge currently in the state budget that will continue to help fund that program. It comes with some additional staffing requirements by the state or by SUNY. So they're also providing some of the resources to help you get there. Pat is over there. Pat is assembling a team, and that team will be working on a plan that we have to submit that addresses our path to achieving those goals that they've set forth for us, and we have to have that in January 15th. So we've got a few months to put that together. And then, what isn't clear is what happens if we don't meet those targets, because I don't think they're focused on that. It's not a, it's not a, we want to beat you over the head if you don't make it. It's, this is where we want you to get because as a system, this gets us to a comfortable, a more comfortable place in terms of retaining our students and helping them complete. In addition to the Academic Momentum Campaign, they've put together a seamless transfer initiative. This is something that's been in the works for a little bit longer, and I can tell you, you know, Pat's been in SUNY for longer than I have, but in the last 25 years, this has been a continuous topic of conversation, SUNY seamless transfer. Every chancellor that we get solves the problem. And so the current iteration of solving this problem is, again, an articulated pathway of, we're going to, they put together a blue-ribbon task force of various campus representatives from across the system, community colleges, senior institutions. They have looked at the practices that have been going on, looked at areas where the pain points that have been existing, and looked at ways that they might work to achieve improvement in the seamless transfer. So they've, again, set some targets. They want to improve our three-year graduation rate, so we saw that in the last slide. They want us to, this is also included as a measurement in this area. And then they want us to look at a vertical transfer rate. So ideally, we're, if they're, they want them to graduate here, but if they don't, and even if they do, they want them to move on to another SUNY institution. They'll even concede another CUNY institution because it is New York State, so they'd rather have them continue their education in a publicly funded institution of higher education. So they want us to raise, again, they're looking at about a 10%. Some of those other metrics we looked at were between 5 and 10%. They're looking at a 10% targeted rate for us to improve. And for us, that would be, you know, about 10 students. So getting 10 more students to move up to a SUNY or CUNY institution. John. So they're going to be, you know, measuring us on this, and they're also putting some resources to bear in terms of trying to help campuses achieve this. They're talking about some systems to help students more smoothly transfer through and understand if I start here and I want to go here, this is what I need to do. So we'll see, we'll see where all that comes out. Then I just wanted to give you some updates on some funding. Some of these I've already mentioned to you, but our behavioral health grant that we had for the past four years, we had applied for continuation on that, and they did not fund that proposal. In this case, it didn't look like they funded any proposals. It looked like this program just kind of ground to a halt. Similarly, with the drug-free communities grant, we had a continuation proposal, and the difference there was they actually gave us a new date by which we could apply. They didn't fund anybody, but they said in April, we're going to, we're going to look for people to apply again. I think, I kind of feel like they're buying time. Is that, you know, if they told us, yeah, just reapply in a couple of months, that's one thing that I think they're trying to get the temperature of what's going to happen. And that mayor may not. The bottom three programs that are listed here on this slide are all SUNY programs that were funded in the state budget. The first one is new money that was put in the budget this year, and Pat put together a plan, and we're going to add additional math, science faculty member. Again, we're told that these dollars are recurring, they're not one-time dollars, so we can expect to continue these programs, although every year there are metrics that we have to meet with these programs. We have to resubmit a plan that needs to be approved. The bottom two programs started last year. Those were additional funds that were added to the state budget last year. We had to come up with a plan. It's restricted to various components of what you can do with it. Our plans were approved last year. We had to submit our metrics and our plans for how we were going to spend the money this year. We recently received approval on both of those, and again, Pat was involved in the healthcare workforce investment plan. Arlene was working on the mental health one, and we just recently, within the last couple of weeks, received notice that those were good to go for another year. So, but at least there's some, there's some bad and there's some good, and we're skewing for a little more good. So, those are the highlights of what I wanted to share with you, unless anyone wanted to talk about my vacation, you know, we can do that, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Other than your vacation?
Well, I guess indirectly, yes. You can make me a salary, so.
Okay. We'll move on to college assembly report.
It's in your packet.
Trustee report. Shani.
We've had a lot of events on campus, and they've all been very successful. We've had wonderful student participation. It seems like it's been a very energetic year so far. Sorry, yesterday we had our Hispanic Heritage event where there was Latin American food. I actually gave up a chapa lesson, if anyone knows, music of Dominican Republic. And, yeah, it was very well received that they want more. And PTK, we had our PTK induction last week as well, which I'm also part of. And so that went wonderfully with our president and chair of PTK in the induction speeches. PTK also has their college project coming up, and it's regarding mental wellness, mental health. They're going to be doing a series of events during the last week of October, a bake sale, scavenger hunt with like mental health awareness, clues, trivia, resources throughout the campus, and then we're going to do a rock painting. And we're going to display the rock painting at some point throughout the campus so that we can have reminders of how to benefit your mental health. What else? There's so much. Midterms are coming up, so there's going to be, there was a pickleball tournament today held by the pickle club, pickleball club, and next week will be, Trio is doing a ping-pong tournament for stress relief during midterms, so for those who want. So, and I know we have a bunch of things coming up in November, but there's still dates set to be set for that, so I can't really give you permanent dates on anything. Any questions?
Any questions? How's the food pantry doing?
Food pantry, thank you, yes. The food pantry is doing excessively well that we've already used all the budget for it. So we're looking for ways to get more funding or like different, where we could get more for the food pantry. And, oh, also, we haven't finalized a date, but the Foggy Mountain Players, the drama club, is also, I'm in. They're doing a murder mystery, and we're setting for November 25th is the date we're looking for, so it's right before Thanksgiving. And you're all welcome to come in and enjoy the show.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the foundation report. I think.
Good evening. My report is very short. I just want to mention a few dates. Tonight, we are invited to go to the gallery. Mr. Bellinger is over there, and we will enjoy talking to him and also enjoy looking at his artwork. The second date I want to remind you is October 31st, the last fifth Friday. You better make reservation to attend. Subject is regarding mental health. And annual golf tournament, which is, sorry, May 21st. Mark your calendar. And the other one is distinguished alumni award as well as clock tower award, which is November 6th at the Holiday Inn Johnstown. And the rest is in your packet. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just asking any questions? If not, who want the committee reports? With finance, President Chuck Millar.
Mr. Chair, the report is in your packet. You're just in the second month of our fiscal year, so it's pretty early on. But, you know, we've collected about 51% of our tuition budget already. Fall is usually the big piece of that, so we're definitely on track with what we had planned. We are closing out the previous fiscal year. We're working with the various offices involved in the audit. Fieldwork begins next week, so the auditors, the external auditors, will be here next week, and we'll be working for the next months, few months to finish that up and that's the board. So I'll answer your report, sir.
For Chuck Millar. Not. Move on to buildings and grounds with trustee Landry.
Chair, just a couple of things that were in your packet. Your intention, highlight, the baseball field upgrades, advertisements were sent out, construction upgrades of the baseball field. The bids are due to be open on October 17th. As far as the athletic facilities project, the new bleachers have been installed the last week in September, and painting has begun. And the last item we want to recognize is the energy performance project that we spoke about before. The evaluation regarding the energy performance contract is completed, and we should get a report on their findings sometime late this month. That includes the items that we want to highlight in our report. Mr. Chair.
Will we have them back in talking about the energy audit, or is that just a report we're going to get?
Yeah, that's our plan.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Landry or trustee Landry? Not. We'll move on to academic affairs with trustee Wilson.
Thank you, chairman. Here's some highlights from my report. This is, Mr. Grande provided these to me. Thank you very much, Pat. Sam Gonzalez, our new instructor of criminal justice, hosted disconnected a police department's drone team. Marty Waffle, professor of computer science, and Dep Chan, our new instructor of computer science, provided a tour of the cyber range and classroom to freshman P-Tech students, and Marty provided a tour to Vice Chancellor Valerie Dent during her visit. Roger Young, Assistant Professor of Robotics and Systems Technology, attended a training in Pennsylvania on the Lesker vacuum system, which resulted in three new labs for nanotechnology and integrated circuits. Eileen Casey, Director of Nursing and Assistant Professor, attended a four-day ASN site visit in preparation of our upcoming accreditation visit. Kristy Davis, Director of External Partnerships and Applied Learning, and Raoko Saguchi, Articulation and Career Specialist, visited classes to promote the Advanced Manufacturing Week, the Transfer Fair, the Internship Fair, and career-related resources that are available to our students. Pam McCall, Associate Dean of Academic Affairs, reports that SUNY FMCC has 15 students working as members of the Empire State Service Corporation, which is a hands-on experience to serve the community through paid public service. These students are assisting in areas related to basic needs, paths of veterans, peer mental health, and sustainability. FM was just awarded five additional slots to serve our K-12 partners at Amsterdam High School through the Liberty Partnership Program. And I think that's very good. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a motion?
One motion, Jack.
As part of the college's ongoing assessment of academic programs and in consultation with the faculty, the administration has determined that the following program is no longer viable and should be deactivated. Following action by the Board of Trustees, the request to deactivate the program will be forwarded to SUNY and the New York State Department. During the three-year deactivation period, the curriculum and resources associated with the programs will be reviewed by the faculty, and any appropriate changes will be considered. The president recommends that the Board of Trustees deactivate the following program, Human Services, AAS. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by type A. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, hearing none, motion passed. Thank you, Chuck Wilson. We'll move on to student affairs with trustee Perry.
All right. The full report is in our packet, but here are some highlights. Al, Al, Arlene Spencer and Greg Young attended the SUNY Basic Needs Summit on September 18th. This was a one-day in-person summit brought together campus professionals, advocates, and leaders from across the SUNY system to explore strategies, share insights, strengthen our collective efforts, and support students' basic needs as essential foundations for student success in higher education. The admissions office submitted their full recruitment schedule, which includes onsite instant admit days, high school presentations, and guidance office visits, the SUNY opt-in forum and college fairs, and our fall open house scheduled for November 8th. Of note, Associate Dean of Enrollment Management, John.
Oscar.
Has returned from a recent international recruiting trip to Scandinavia, which included Sweden, Denmark, and Norway. Outreach and student success coaching and tutoring has had a successful kickoff with calendars established for both in-person and online after-hours tutoring, embedded coaching in freshman English and computer courses, and hiring of new success coaches for the Trio program. Lucas Zoka is a SUNY FMCC alumni and former Trio member of both FMCC and SUNY Potstian, where he served as a peer tutor. Now finished with his undergrad studies and enrolled in grad school, Lucas fights his way back to FMCC as this year's Trio Academic Success Coach. That's very cool. The Science and Technology Entry Program, which we know as STEP, started on September 24th with a dinner informational sessions for students and their families. The first after-school workshop started October 8th. New this year, STEP is offering a scholarship to STEP students who are registered for college and high school classes through FMCC. The tandem with, in tandem with the FMCC Foundation Scholarship, this additional opportunity for STEP may help provide 100% tuition coverage for eligible students. That's very awesome for the STEP program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Perry. Do we have any questions? Not, we'll move on to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Dr. Chuck Millar.
Pam was not able to be here with us this evening, so the report is in.
Thank you, Dr. Chuck Millar. We'll move on to a presentation with Dan.
So, a couple of items, the major one being that the college is underway with its strategic planning process. Leadership and administrations held a retreat on September 29th, which was facilitated by Jay DeTraglia, the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services over at BOSIS. The group reviewed and revised the college mission and vision statement, conducted a SWOT analysis, and developed a set of proposed planned goals which center around the themes of partnership, student success, and resources. So next steps are to form or a strategic planning committee, which is, has been formed. There is a spot on the committee for a Board of Trustees member. So if you're interested in being part of that committee, you could reach out to me or maybe to Maria, she would forward that to, that request to me. We're going to be meeting bi-weekly, and our first meeting is actually tomorrow, tomorrow at noon. And those meetings are going to be held primarily on Fridays at noon, so I know that may not be optimal for members of the Board of Trustees. But again, if a member is interested, we could certainly work out a technology alternative for you.
Do we have any interested parties here tonight?
You'll have to commit, right?
Okay.
Certainly not for the meeting tomorrow night. But we do have a couple of spots. We have, we have one more student that we're looking for, and we're looking for another member of the college community, so, you know, it's not, it's not last-served kind of, kind of thing. So if you have some interest over the next week or two, please reach out, and we can get you on that committee. Like you said, the committee will be meeting bi-weekly, and of course, there'll be touchpoints with the leadership team and monthly reports to the Board of Trustees to make you aware and to make the leadership team aware of that progress. The committee's charge is to refine those proposed goals into specific goals with specific objectives, gather input and feedback from the campus community and external stakeholders, make any further revisions based on that input and feedback, and deliver the plan to the college president by April 14th, 2026. uh, so that it can be presented to the, the college assembly at their April board meeting and get it to this body, um, by the latest June for, for action. And then the plan would go into effect, of course, September, uh, first, twenty-twenty-six. Uh, two other minor items. Uh, last month I mentioned the Community College Survey of Student Engagement. So it just got word today that all our paperwork is in and we're good to go. Uh, we're, we're basically signed up for that, that survey, which will happen in the spring. They will be contacting me, uh, later in the year to talk about the administration of that, of that survey. And just a final minor thing, uh, on October sixth, I attended a webinar, uh, about transfer, transfer and, um, credit mobility. The middle stage president was a panelist and, um, this seems to be a topic that's coming up, uh, bubbling up a little bit in the surface in the accreditation world. Last December, I attended a, um, ALO breakfast on this topic and it's really centered around, um, transfer, which, um, you know, may or may not affect us certainly transferring out of a two-year school. But that credit mobility, which kind of goes into SUNY seamless transfer and, um, excuse me, recognition of, um, different types of learning, so, um, you know, experiential learning, um, prior experience type learning, so. Sorry, should've grabbed the water. Any questions?
Any questions for? Mr. Tal, if not, thank you very much. Thank you. We'll move on to, uh, personnel with trustee McMahon.
Thank you, Chair.
The full report is in your packet. I like a few, a few items. The good news is that we've only had staff additions this month, which is what you want, right? No subtractions, nobody's leaving. Let's keep it that way, right? So just to name the, the ones that have joined us, Nicole Corona has accepted the principal count clerk for the payroll, uh, payroll position effective, uh, September twenty-ninth. Jennifer Diner has accepted the principal clerk in the registrar office effective on October sixth. And Jessica Holly Klett has accepted the director of student services, success services, effective, uh, October twentieth. We're, uh, close or final stage, uh, for a principal clerk and financial aid. There are seven other positions that are open that are in various stages. And there are no motions requiring board action, no lawsuits or arbitrations. Yeah, all right, smiles. And, uh, there's no update on collective bargaining. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee McMahon. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to trustee Collins. Hello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I have nothing to report in the policy.
It's alone, these people. I know.
That's okay. Do it for the new. You got some stuff ahead of you.
Thank you very much. With all that being said, do we have any other business to discuss before the board?
Business, yes.
Yes.
I have a, a big compliment for the Radiology Technology Department. I came across a, one of the students I didn't know, I thought he is working in that department for years. And I said, where did you go to school? He said, I'm still a student at FM. And, uh, he was extremely well-trained. You should never, um, guess, he, his name was Jake, um, Durkey. And, um, very, uh, professional. I mean, it seemed like he was in that department for many years. My congratulation to all the people that are involved to train this wonderful young man and woman.
Thank you. Pass that along.
Yes.
Now, before we adjourn, uh, educational showcase tonight is at the Turner Gallery, the Bernie Bellinger Show. So after we adjourn, we'll, those of you who want to go, walk on over, take a look what his, uh, work is like. Great show.
Yeah.
So
Crazy.
With all that being said, uh, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Motion by type A, second by trustee Wilson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, thank you all for coming. Cheers. That's why they call me Fast Eddie.